So, welcome everyone. I'm Michael Goldman and this is the October meeting of the Bronxville Village Planning Board. Appreciate everyone coming out. We haven't had a chance to meet together since July, so it's nice to see everyone and get back to business. Christina has circulated to all of us the minutes from July, I think reflecting a few amendments as everyone had a chance to take a peek. Any corrections? If not, does someone want to move the minutes?
So move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. We have minutes. We have one item of business tonight, and that's to review an application at 20 Parkway Road. Do we have someone here on behalf of the applicant? If so, could you come to the mic and please identify yourself? Thanks.
Good evening. My name's Steve Seacon. I'm the architect working with Lauren Kraus, the homeowner at 20 Parkway, joined tonight by Tom Cahany from Hudson Engineering. Is it all right if I start?
Please.
Okay.
And I think Peter was pointing out there's a laser pointer there, if that'll be helpful to you. And Paul's pretty good at navigating whatever you want up there, so...
Okay. So, what I thought I'd do is just give a little bit of background and information on the site and the project and the different factors that we're encountering. So, I know some of you have been to the site and are familiar. So, Parkway Road runs north-south and our site is right over here. On the east side, it is flanked by Metro North tracks to the east and to the west by the Bronx River, and then the Parkway sits a little bit further to the east here. The site itself is about a quarter of an acre. It's fairly flat. As you know, it sits in FEMA flood zone AE. Elevation 83.3 is the flood elevation, which helps determine some of our floor heights and so forth. And so, what's there now is an existing three-family house. First two floors contain three-bedroom units and the top floor contains a one-bedroom unit that's all in fairly bad disrepair. In the back, you can see a garage, which also exists. Needs to be taken down and rebuilt or raided. The flood elevation at the top of the page...
If you could just get a little closer to the mic, thanks.
Okay. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, great.
Okay. So, you can see the AE floodway here and our house sits right there at the 83.3. So, what we're proposing, if we could go back for a moment, Paul, is to salvage the foundation of the existing house and build on top of it and add an extension of the foundation and build on top of that, resulting in three-bedroom units at the property. And what this would accomplish is, you know, obviously trying to salvage the foundation, which happens to be at the right elevation for our work, as well as also to put together sort of a rational game plan for the owner to live and rent two units adjacent. As a result of needing two parking spaces per unit, we are going to have parking to the north and parking to the south. This is the garage dimension of the four. Needs to either be built or fully raised, and by the addition of one... Parking spot. Otherwise, traffic should really be no factor. All the site distances are good. Everything else is fairly straightforward along the road. The area, as you know, is really one of, it's kind of transitional in nature. In that 100-yard circle, there's four zoning districts. The fabric of... Bish-mash, different kinds, different eras, and basically, this has, as you can see from the aerial photograph, you know, many houses on substandard lots. And we analyzed the... Well, it's not in your package. Is it all right if I distribute a few?
Please. Oops. Would there be an extra one for Paul?
No, I can share.
Alina, I can share.
We'll share.
What that map shows really is the non-conformity of the neighborhood. We analyzed 15 houses nearby, and essentially, three-quarters are non-conforming in terms of lot coverage and FAR. So, what we're...
Do you think these are houses the predated, the zoning of the neighborhood? I'm just curious. I know you'd be speculating, but...
Yes. I think that's accurate.
Okay.
And, you know, as is the case, you know, also for 20 Parkway. And as you could see, you know, from, you know, there appears to be a vacant lot next to them, but it's actually part of what they own. You know, former applications came to the zoning board seeking to build a house and were denied, so that's an avenue that we don't want to explore. And what we're proposing is that these three-bedroom units, you know, are market rate rentals, good condition, add, you know, a nice aesthetic. You know, we have elevations if you pack it. Happy to go through that. And we studied several options. Four-unit one dismissed, thanks to Mr. Taft's guidance, and we've looked at other solutions for three units, ones that were trying to basically salvage the entire house and just build right next to it, but the framing and so forth does not lend itself to that scheme. We looked at other types of schemes where we had single unit on the side on the north lot. That also didn't make much sense. You know, in terms of other environmental factors, the flooding, I will let Tom take a little bit more narrative in terms of the stormwater management. But the, there'll be, you know, a number of flood vents at the lowest level. The first floor level is about four feet above the floodplain, and what we're seeking to do is just something sensible, you know, that, you know, Mr. Taft doesn't have to come visit every year and, you know, check out the flooding and the homeowner doesn't lose power and, you know, have all the debris and so forth. In terms of lighting, the, we're planning to do, you know, all kind of dark sky compliant fixtures, low mushroom lights at the paths, shielded fixtures at the entry. And in terms of planting and so forth, we're planning to do, you know, better privacy screens here, all, you know, with flood-tolerant planting. We investigated doing a possible rain garden to help, but, you know, right now, we're relying on infiltration and other kind of overflow. So, the other thing naturally, you know, being right next to the railroad are the acoustics. So, the walls will be filled with both thermal and sound insulation. Windows will be triple-glazed, and we'll hope, you know, that baffles, you know, most of the noise, as well as the din from the Parkway. In terms of other stormwater management, I'd be happy to answer questions, but someone far more qualified?
Just before we get to the stormwater, and others may have questions too, but I think a core one that we're going to have is, we hear you on the non-conforming, you know, existing housing on the block, but presumably, when the village adopted the zoning for this particular district, they were aware of that, you know, when they set the zoning. And according to, I think, what Paul, you shared with us, there's sort of seven different criteria where this is outside the zoning, you know, so it's pretty aggressively, I think, outside any envelope that you have there. And so, I think the question, we'll let the siren go by, the question is, was the existing zoning something you took into account in creating the mass here, or did you kind of set it aside? What's your take on that?
Oh, no. We, yes, we abided by the regulations as much as we could to make something that's feasible, you know, in terms of quality and livability and... Way too, you know, aggressive. The two-unit just doesn't make sense. We looked at keeping the house and just putting the mechanicals upstairs, but that just doesn't do what the owner needs. And then, you know, trying to get a sensible third unit is something that we have been trying to, you know, both to the code, to the environmental concerns, to the flooding. So, that's kind of what led us in this direction.
Other questions for the architect before we let the stormwater expert come up? Go ahead, please.
Is it being lived in now or rented now, these three units? Is, are you the, do you live there?
Could you maybe come up to the mic, if that's okay? It's good to hear from you two.
I'm the owner and I'm currently renting it out.
Can you just give us the name, sorry?
Oh, sorry.
Your name.
My name's Lauren Kraus. I'm the owner of 20 Parkway Road, along with my husband Brent Tisugie. He's not here, he's traveling. We've occupied the second floor, which is 17, or first floor, which is 1,700 square feet, since we bought it five days prior to Ida, and our welcome gift was no electricity for three weeks. My two kids missed their first two days of school. So, I learned firsthand the skeletons of this home, and it really helped inform the iterative process of the design. I mean, we fell in love with the property because of its lot size, and we envisioned originally just renovating it as-is, and then we learned about global warming, which we believed in all along, but we realized this was not a 100-year flood.
So, you live in one of the units and you rent the other two?
So, the top floor is completely vacant and has been forever.
And are you proposing to make these units and not live there anymore?
No. I would, we would live in one and we would rent the other two. To really, I think the difference between two years ago and now, that's also informed our design iteration process, is the cost of capital has changed. So, the idea was to spread it over several units to make this, you know, viable for us to actually build, and we wanted to build something that was environmentally resistant to what we know is going to happen next, which just happened last Saturday, so...
Yep. Thank you.
And the, sorry, one last, sorry.
Sure.
To just make the house, move everything upstairs and take the house and just put everything higher so you don't worry about the water anymore? You tried, that wasn't feasible, or instead of doing this, just make...
So, if we think about, so this is a 103-year-old structure that for decades served as a triplex, a duplex, and a single-family home. The front of the single-family home is actually oriented on the side. It was moved once or twice onto new foundation, and it's really bandages and, this was the historian who owned the home prior to me. Her brother lived on the second floor and they raised their kids there. And she said, "Oh, this used to be the front door." This is glued and duct taped in all the places you can see where the windows are. So, to be honest, we started to lose trust and the integrity of the historic structure as we lived there longer. And as much as we wanted to preserve something worth preserving, we kind of learned this is probably not the structure that's warranted of preserving.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions, or if not, maybe we'll talk about the water that's a constant in this village, please.
My name's Thomas Cahany. I'm with Hudson Engineer. So, for this site, we have a little bit of a unique scenario. Because of the layout of the site, we actually have two stormwater systems. The stormwater systems are designed for the 50-year storm, which is about seven and a half inches over 24 hours. They're designed for all the impervious area on the site. So, the garage, the main building, and this driveway are tributary to this system on the north side. It consists of 45 structures similar to a milk crate that would allow the water to infiltrate back into the ground. And then, the southern driveway would be tributary to this system in the center of the driveway with nine of those same units. Both systems connect to a basin in the front of the property with a piped overflow to the city system for, in the event of a larger rainstorm. This results in...
How high is this going to be? Sorry, how high is this? I can't see that. How?
So, this is all going to be about three feet, three feet deep underground.
Three feet?
Yep.
And you think that's enough for this?
It's just, we seem to get a 50-year storm every couple of years here, so...
Yeah, so this is kind of the design standard, but in terms of compared to the existing conditions, this design results in a 66% reduction for total runoff from the site. So, the grass areas from the site are still going to leave, leave the site, but the overall reduction over existing conditions would be about 66%. And for larger storms, there is still removal through this system. Obviously, once you exceed the capacity, it's going to fill up more. With that said, we are located in the 100-year floodplain. The elevation's about 83. The site pitches from the northeast corner at elevation 84. The, along the road is about elevation 82. So, we're right at that flood elevation. I know there were a few comments regarding the flood permit and equivalent storage. Those calculations will be provided in the next submission, but we don't anticipate any issue meeting those requirements.
And I assume there are currently no real flood mitigation measures on the site?
No.
Other than the grass?
Correct.
Can we, does the homeowner, can you give us a reference about what the flooding was two weeks ago at the existing home? What you guys experienced?
Sure, sure. So, I...
I'm sorry to make you pop up and down, but this is helpful, yeah.
At least we took the benches out of the way, so you...
It's totally fine. So, I think I'm one of, a couple of neighbors are here who've been impacted by flooding. I don't have a sump pump in the basement and the windows, when you approach the front door, I would say the water height was about three feet, but the backfill is what really impacted the basement, whatever wonderful sanitation water that was. It probably submerged, I would say, three and a half feet.
But it didn't get to the first floor, it was the basement?
Oh, no, no, no. Okay. I actually put a presentation together. I'll show you a picture. You can take it partly from, you almost saw it right to the...
Yeah, thank you. We can hand them across, it's okay.
Thank you so much. So, this is...
You can see from the outside.
Oh, got it.
That's 2020.
And this was a storm two weeks ago?
Is that, is that how high the water?
No, 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 sorry. That was Ida. That was Ida.
I'm presuming the prior owners didn't advertise this to you when they sold you the house?
So, disclaimer on this, they've gotten FEMA flood insurance required, and so New York State now is prior to flood disclosure. So, when I rented the property, first disclosure, he was talking about how the page of water was draining. So, that's what I suppose we...
I'm sorry, if we can get you back to the...
I didn't know. No, no, I didn't.
Yeah, again.
I didn't know the scale, but I did learn that that was the worst that anyone had ever had ever...
The Ida, yeah. And how was it two weeks ago? You said a couple of feet in the basement?
It was a couple of feet in the basement. I think if we had a sump pump, we would have taken maybe two, two feet of water. We have a boiler on the floor, it's new.
In the basement?
In the basement.
Good planning, yeah.
Right? It was great. I mean, we were five days old at that point. We had no electricity or heat source and cloth wires in the house, so we were...
In the new plan, what would the basement plan be? Just big picture.
There is no basement. We're treating this like this is an oceanfront property. That's really the...
Architecturally, would there be a basement just to capture?
I'm kind of unfinished.
Yep, understood.
Basin for the ocean.
Thank you. Other questions for the team? Before we get to, we have some of our consultants will be...
So, to somebody, it sounds like this will, this proposal would reduce the amount of water that runs off of the site, but it's still susceptible to flooding from outside of the border of the house, right?
Correct. It's still going to be in the flood zone, and that's, that's actually part of the flood permit requirements, is that we can't fill in the floodplain. So, we have to provide more storage than is current.
Oh, so you don't contribute to the flood?
Correct.
Right, because they're, they're covering over what is current, the third unit is essentially covering over what was grass before, and so, you're trying to more than mitigate that.
Correct.
Yeah, understood.
So, I was going to say that the additional wells or the, the holding pieces for the, that's for the impervious addition, but what about the water that's going to go into the house regardless? Is there, has that been taken into account to take that out since there's no sump pump, right? So, right now, you don't have a sump pump in the house, so it goes into the house and it stays there until it goes out, but theoretically, you're going to still get that, right?
Right. So, there's going to be flood vents?
Yes.
To allow the water to flow in and out of that void space?
Okay. And that takes that water into account?
Yes.
What you're doing, it does? Okay.
So, the main improvement you made was just basically capturing all the water coming off the roof and putting it into those submerged...
Correct. That'll take care of your general stormwater, and then the floodwater is essentially balancing out the amount of material you're removing from the site.
Can you just clarify for me again, how much storage is in each of those driveways? It's three feet deep for the length of those?
Correct.
That's what it looks like on the bottom left?
Do we have these?
Yeah.
In our package?
Yeah, it's deeper in the application.
Page 120.
But just to be clear, the vents that will be taking the water out of the house from the floodwater will be pushing it out, and then the basins will be collecting the additional water from the non-pervious. Is that my, is that accurate?
Can you repeat that?
So, the flow that goes back and forth, the flood flow, that put in, when you put that in, that's going to take the water out of the house from the floodwater, right? But then, in addition to that, you have non-pervious, so those wells will capture, take into account both?
So, they're two, two separate designs? I think that's what you're, so this is strictly for the rainwater over the surfaces of the house? That's how those are sized?
Yes. So, what I'm asking is what about the floodwater? And you said there's a flow out. What happens to that when that floodwater comes up? And, you know, normally, you'd have a sump pump and pushing it out. You have the flaps or whatever that will push it out, but what happens to that water? How is that captured?
It's not captured.
Okay. That's what I just, okay. I just wanted to clear that that's not...
Yeah.
So, you'll still have flooding in that area, like you said, and it'll be still pushed out, but it's not as if the non-perv, the wells, I guess that's the word, that you're putting in are just compensating for the addition or the removal of pervious material?
Correct.
So, there, okay.
Yep.
So, there's really no additional flood mitigation that has been done?
And Paul, did you want to add a thought at this time? Yeah?
So, I think if you look at what's there now, you have water that goes into a basement during a flood. It just sits there. They call the fire department, they come pump it out. And this project would have to be fully compliant with the floodplain laws that we have in New York State, and they, and so there are two different things that it accomplishes. These flood vents are vents that when the water comes and it pushes it, it opens up and the water can flow in, and it would be on two sides, in this case, maybe the front and the back, and so that the water can also go out when it gets up to a certain amount. So, whereas their basement now is just, it's solid, so flooding, you know, technically, the flooding is on the outside perimeter there. Yeah, it permeates in and whatnot, but it has a harder time to do that in that design, so that this allows all that water to go in. And it's like, let it go in and let it come out, and the big benefit of that is to make sure that the foundation doesn't get compromised, because if you, you know, if your basement is mostly on a below-grade, you're a little better off, but in a construction like this one, you don't want the hydraulic pressure to blow in the foundation. So, it's doing two different things, and, you know, it is going to be much more compliant to today's codes. As a building inspector, you know, I'd be thrilled to see this put in just, you know, on the technical and the, you know, disaster preparedness parts of it. So, as far as the floodgates, it lets it go in, lets it go out, and it keeps it from blowing out the foundation. So, that's the benefit that I think you were asking about. It's part of the whole area of flooding that really we can't control at this point.
Yeah, her description of this as a beach house is very helpful in terms of...
Right.
Understanding how it, how it works.
Right. Yeah, because another method would be just to have it on stilts.
Yeah, effectively, it's kind of like that. Understood.
All right?
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. That was helpful.
Other questions before I think we were going to get to our planning consultant, if that's okay? So, Sarah, do you have a few things to guide us on?
So, you did get a copy of my memorandum?
Just if you could introduce?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We know you, but...
I'm sorry. Sarah Brown from Hargestein, Hanover. I'm the village planning consultant. So, our review, as you had stated, Mr. Chan, this has gone back and forth. We've looked at a few variations in the plans, and so...
Just a little closer to the mic.
I'm sorry, I'm sure... So as far as the floodgates, it lets it go in, lets it go out, and it keeps it from blowing out the foundation. So that's the benefit that I think you were asking about. It, it's part of the whole area of flooding that really we can't control at this point.
Yeah, her description of this as a beach house is very helpful in terms of...
Right.
Understanding how it, how it works.
Yeah, because another method would be just to have it on stilts.
Yeah, effectively it's kind of like that, understood.
All right.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that, that was helpful.
Thanks, Paul. Other questions before I think we were going to get to our planning consultant, if that's okay? So Sarah, do you have a few things to guide us on?
So you did get a copy of my memorandum?
Just if you could introduce, we know you, but thank you.
I'm sorry, Sarah Brown from Hargestein, Hanover, I'm the village planning consultant. So our review, as you had stated, Mr. Chan, this has gone back and forth.
We've looked at a few variations in the plans, and so if you...
Just a little closer to the mic.
I'm sorry, I'm sure...
I'm, I'm doing this for Peter's benefit.
I'll lean into it.
Thank you.
He had reviewed the previous plans that had the four units, and then the applicant did reduce them to the three units that are currently proposed. So for our memorandum, we do, we did have a few.
...with the way it's made and the questions about the driveway, but I think you may take away and the conversation from what we have...
And in the memo...
...is resilient compliance? This is going with the...
You're doing your best, let's keep rolling.
I'll talk as loud as I can. So as has been noted in the application and the village inspector's review...
This would require variances for lot size, lot depth, land area for each dwelling, front yards...
Rear yard setback, accessory building side and rear yard setback, building coverage...
FAR, and the required setbacks for the proposed generator and decks. So I, I think that is the biggest issue right now that the board has, is looking at and considering. In our previous memo, we did talk about the size and scale, and that we felt that the size and scale was much too large for the lot that it was on. Some of that has, it has been reduced, but as far as the FAR goes, they're, they're still, they've reduced it from 101 to 0.494, but that, that's still over the 3,900 by quite a bit, so we're not talking about minor variances for small square footage amounts or small setback variances, these are, these are pretty, a pretty large scale.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Questions for Sarah?
If I can offer a recommendation, we didn't get into this in our memo, but as part of your analysis that you're looking at, it may be beneficial to have a plan that is actually a compliant plan, that then you could compare what would really be allowed on property versus what is being proposed to give you a comparison.
Please, come.
I don't want to think negatively, but if someone's home burned to the ground on Parkway Road, knowing that 75% of the homes are non-compliant, would the homeowner, if they want to rebuild their three-bedroom home on their lot, not be able to build the square footage?
I don't know the answer to that question, I don't know if we have someone here who, who does? Do we have someone who does? I see, I see village council here, so you may have asked the question with the right fellow in the room.
We'll speak maybe more directly to our code, but there is, generally zoning codes have provisions...
I'm sorry.
Jim Stout, village attorney, my apologies. So Paul might know the section of the code, but generally there are provisions in the code where if, if a one-family house is destroyed by catastrophe, there is some grandfathering that permits it to be rebuilt, in some codes and it may be in ours, that if it's destroyed by less than 50%, I'd have to take a look, but generally...
But that's specific situation.
Codes have an allowance for it.
Catching water dissection.
Not a voluntary, not a voluntary demolition.
Understood, so in this particular case, to be more realistic than a fire, unfortunately, if a flood came and, you know, Noah's flood comes and washes the way the house, my understanding from what you're saying is you could rebuild not this, but effectively your existing structure, is that fair? Yeah?
Were you...
Okay, thanks.
I have a question for Sarah.
Sorry, Sarah, Peter's going to insist that you get back to that mic, he's right, for the folks watching at home.
Yes.
Have, have you reviewed other applications or other renovations that have been in this area, or are there other precedents where we've, where we've permitted or had proposals for this type of, these amount of variances on, on a lot?
Not in my time with the village, I have not.
And over what period of time is that?
I have been with the village since 2019.
Okay, thank you.
Our firm has been with the village longer than that, so I could certainly check in our records to see, and I think Christina and Paul could probably help me with that if you would like me to look into that.
Yeah.
And then one final question, do the Avalon...
We're all getting our steps in here, yeah.
I'm loving this. The Avalon or the villages, as I understand it, was built in 1999, and you'd probably break every zoning code of today, that wouldn't be a...
It's a special zoning district.
Designation.
Development district or something.
There, you're at a different end of the block that is mostly single-family, it's kind of luck of the draw, but that's, that's where you happen to be.
Because the rules you have to follow are the B residence zoning rules, whereas the Avalon is, I forget the exact designation, but it was a specially zoned development.
But I think you're raising a point that we're all going to be discussing, which is, and we'll dive into this more later, but to what extent do we have the authority, you know, or do we think we should have the authority to change, you know, some of the fundamental zoning in the village, and to what extent is that really up to the village government? We'll all be chatting about that, but I think that's, that's at the core of what we're all going to be chatting about, so you're raising an important question. Yeah, thanks. Okay, should we get to Paul? I think it would be helpful to get his perspective, sorry.
One last question for you, yeah, sorry. I wasn't going to wait till you sat down, but...
It's okay.
Yeah. I haven't seen a reference to the archaeologically sensitive areas, is, is that likely to be an issue?
Probably not.
Okay.
It's just more of a...
And we're completing the record.
Gotcha.
The EAF form did have that checked off, so we just need the verification that there is no archaeological sensitive area.
Okay.
It's more of a procedural.
Right, whatever was there probably got washed away.
We were all thinking the same. Exactly. In Ida, probably. Paul, could we get your perspective, please?
Paul Tap, building inspector, sorry, I didn't introduce myself prior. With, with guidance of Jim Stout, I, I don't know if this is a proper time to decide on lead agency or anything, or...
The, is the, is this an almost action? I don't have to look for it, but there's no harm in determining if this is, if this is an almost action.
It's applicable.
Then we would be the lead agency.
My understanding was we were starting with planning here, but, yeah.
Okay.
We did start the question, I guess, if it was not necessary.
Yeah.
Okay. And I think as far as that, we're waiting for Ship, Shippo to actually provide something in writing, the applicant got something verbally from them. Then as far as the zoning criteria, I just wanted to point out in, in his chart for the building coverage, the, the value for the building coverage variance seems to be incorrect. I believe it should be 13.5% versus the 10.7%.
That's the amount of the variance, Paul?
Yes, yeah, yeah. But I think Sarah just kind of went over what variances they need, it, it looks like the building coverage, lot size, lot depth, front yard, rear yard, building coverage, and FAR. And we've talked about the stormwater runoff and the floodplain, so that, that's kind of a broad view of what, what you have before you.
And Paul, to pick up on Mike's question, have you had an application at this point that's asked for this magnitude of variances, or...
No, no, I mean, you know, we just did One Stone Place, but that's quite different.
I'm thinking for, you know, residential...
Their amount of variances weren't all that much, not really, no, I haven't had anything, I've been here five years.
Yeah.
And there hasn't been anything on Parkway Road in your tenure, has there any?
All of the non-conforming lots, they've been non-conforming since the beginning of time.
Yeah, 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 there's been no...
Before the zoning code?
Doesn't look like there's been any new construction there in quite a while.
Right.
Except the Avalon.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, really, there's nothing to compare this to.
Right.
That's what you were asking.
Okay.
Yeah.
And am I right that this is the only, have I got the terminology right, a Zone B?
Yes, this is in Zone B.
It's just Parkway Road that's...
Residents B, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So I, you know, and it's all, I think actually it's mostly either two or three-family, you know, up to a certain point, and then there's, they get larger as you go up.
Parkway.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And in my, in my research of this property, it looks like it was a three-family in 166, and then it was converted to a two-family at that point, I think, that's what our records show, which was very scant, that's about the extent of what I could, could find.
Mm-hmm.
They, they did at one point have a variance in the rear for an extension on the kitchen, but, you know, that's, it's kind of irrelevant, I think, at this point.
Okay. Any questions for Paul before we go to the public meeting?
No.
Okay, thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Okay, so I propose to open up the public meeting, if anyone's come here to chat about the application, now would be a good time to step up. Please.
Hello, my name is Nicole, I'm right next door in 16 Parkway, so we're neighbors, and I fully support this project. I think it'll be a great improvement, I mean, to see a brand-new construction right next door, I think everyone in Parkway Road will be so happy to see this. I'm surprised to hear that the zoning codes currently are so different from what's already in existence there. It sounds like this will be a headache for everyone on the, on the block. I do knock on wood, no fires on our, on our street, but the idea that we could not somehow construct the same that we have, it's pretty scary to me, and I'm wondering if, I don't know, if it could be revised, what is the standard? Why should, she has this enormous lot, I imagine this size of a building should very, look very nice there, and the kids can run around and play, right now it looks like a soccer field, right?
My husband's surprised by having some trees down against the soccer field.
Yeah, all this land, and, you know, in a beautiful place, this is quite beautiful, you know, occasionally we do get this flood, but look at it now, it bounced back and the kids are running around, the idea of having three units and other families move in, more friends on the block, this is great. And one thing I worry is if this type of project doesn't get approved, then will this property just sit there in this repair with all these other units on top just sitting there? All the mice, you know, imagine, it's like a haunted house, perfect for Halloween. You know, if, if you don't allow homeowners like...
It's not your fault, keep going, please.
If it's not economically viable, then no one will ever make it look nice. So I understand that she needs to build three units, she needs to rent out, it's just the economics of it all. I, I don't know, you have to be realistic, right, of what's possible, so I hope, I hope that you can provide these variances so that this project can move forward and, and that, you know, she can move forward in two years. It's a long time, so I, this project, and I'm right next door.
Mm-hmm.
Imagine, my property, I'll be the one hearing all the demolition, and I don't mind, we'll get through it.
When you look at the property, are you to the right or to the left?
If, so if you're looking towards her house, I'm right on the right.
Got it, thank you.
And, and just based on distance, my house sits the closest.
Right, because there's the in-effect empty lot on the other side, understood.
Right, right, we have, her driveway sort of kisses my property line.
Oh, right, yeah.
And we have, we share these plans, we have a great neighborly relationship, so, yeah, that, that's all I have to say. I, I really hope you can provide these variances, I think this would be a great addition for Parkway Road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public who would like to comment?
I think we've gotten that one. I think we now have maybe six or seven letters of support.
I think they're attached to what we just received, the, the illustration of the other houses.
There's two others, and, you know, one of the things that motivated me about Parkway Road and that I fell in love with, and I think it's a street that's largely forgotten, so there were some huge wins across the community, the speed limit reduction, which Parkway Road was a big participant in, 64 signatures on the street of people that wanted that, Malte Park at the end of the street, One Stone Place that you mentioned, rationalizing the first floor, making it parking, and then moving that square footage, this is a very similar concept to de-risk the basement, there is no basement, it's just a basin for catching water and moving the mechanicals up, and making this a beautiful street for families and walkability, and I, I think, I don't know, I'd be curious to know, did you get any opposition when you researched or anyone that wrote letters of opposition for the project?
Christina, have we...
I don't know if we have the letters, I don't know if we have them at all. Okay. But you have it in the, in the packet?
Christina, I don't know if you can receive them this way or not, but, yeah. We'll let Peter do his work here for one sec, thank you. Yeah.
So, I mean, my point of view, I think this lifts and elevates a community, it's the start of people being incentivized and excited about improving their homes on a street that's incongruent with, I think, a lot of Bronxville right now, and in my home specifically is dragging down the average the most because of the way that it looks, and we'd love to change that.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right, if there's no one else for the public meeting, I think we're going to go ahead and close the public meeting and start some discussion here on the board, if you don't mind, I'll kick us off. I think, you know, there are two countervailing things that we're all considering here, I think on the one hand the idea of an improvement to a structure that could use some work and that would be helpful to, you know, the overall sense of the neighborhood, and that would address some of the flooding that will perpetually be an issue on the street, I think those things are all, you know, positives as we look at this, but I think what weighs heavily on all of us is that, you know, the village and the trustees have, you know, worked pretty hard over time to establish a zoning code that, you know, establishes what the density should be relative to lot size in different parts of the, of the village, and I think all of us, I think all of us are probably homeowners in this village would love to expand our houses, and, you know, what we do and what the zoning board does is consider the magnitude of, you know, what's reasonable, and we exist to, within reason, provide variances that are good for the village, but I think what I'm struggling with as I look at this is whether this, as currently constituted, goes beyond really what we should consider our purview of, you know, if, if the village, for instance, wants more density on Parkway and wants to see projects like this happen, it may be necessary for the village, you know, to determine that rather than for us to determine that, so I'll be interested in what, you know, other members of the board have to say, but I think, you know, speaking for myself, I'd encourage you to continue to consider, I know you've already downsized, but to consider what's possible that could both achieve your goals and our goals of improvement, but get us closer to what I think the village has said to us they'd like to see in this district, and with that, I'll throw it open.
The issue of whether or not variances are granted, I guess most of the variances here are really for the zoning board to consider, but for the pl- planning point of view, I think it's important that we don't do things that are inconsistent with the character of the neighborhoods, and I think we've been careful about that and considered that in a number of different places, like we, we had a house on Sturgis that required some variances, and we granted it because it was essentially the smallest house in that area, and I was struck when I drove by, sorry for snooping, at how this seemed to be the least densely covered lot on Parkway Road, and what you're proposing seems to be more in keeping with the character of Parkway And what you're proposing seems to be more in keeping with the character of Parkway Road. And I hadn't, hadn't realized that the, the, um, it, the unit, uh, shows six bedrooms, but, or seven bedrooms, but it really only has six, right, 'cause the top floor isn't usable. And this would raise it to nine. So it, um, seems like it's closer to a Parkway Road structure than the existing structure. Having said that, there are, uh, you know, I, I don't think we deviate from the plans, uh, very willingly, but it is anomalous that this area is zoned such that only, you know, two or three of the houses are, uh, in compliance. Sort of curious as to why this particular set of zoning standards was enacted when it's so inconsistent with the neighborhood. That's just my, my initial thoughts.
Okay. Shall we keep going down? Let's give everybody a chance to, Mike?
Um, I think when I spent time the other day in the neighborhood, I thought the feedback was resounding that amongst the neighbors in the area, there is a desire to redevelop Parkway Road for a few reasons. One is to, um, protect those homes from the flooding damage, um, and, and improving that. And two is, um, to update the housing stock in that area. And so I think they were encouraged by this development. I think offsetting that is, um, the constraints in the zoning code in that area that I struggle with, that we do want to allow for progress and, and new developments, but we have to respect the code, the zoning, um, code that we've been asked to enforce. And, um, you know, where I would think a bigger question is, is whether this area B needs to be reviewed for an appropriate zoning code for that area to redevelop. And I don't think that's in our purview, but we would enforce the village, whatever they decide on, how they want that area to be redeveloped.
I don't have anything additional to add. I agree with what you, all three have said.
Yeah, I think we're struggling a bit with whether or not the, well, I mean, the variances aren't gonna really come from us. They'll come from the zoning board, right?
But the, the, correct me, Jim, I think the way we're handling this is first, it's going to planning at sort of the conceptual level, and then it will get to zoning after us, because I think some of the issues here are so fundamental, but you, you could correct me.
So it would be typical in an application like this, especially where so many variances are requested, that it start at the planning board. The planning board work the plan sometimes, 'cause oftentimes the planning board will say right off the bat, from a planning standpoint, we don't see it. We want it to be closer to compliance and so forth, um, and sort of not waste the time of having it go over to zoning only to have it come back to you. So it has to start somewhere, right? And then, so pla- oftentimes, planning will work the plan, um, will make recommendations to the applicant. The applicant can agree with them or not. Um, and then when it gets to a certain point, the planning board can then sort of release it to the zoning board with possibly a recommendation one way or another, um, having, having worked on it itself. So that would be a ta- a fairly, um, typical process that would be fol- would be followed in a case like this. Starts here.
Yeah.
You work it. When you get it either where you want it or at complete impasse with the applicant, and it goes over to zoning, um, either with or without a, a recommendation from you, one way or the other.
Yeah, I think, and this was my understanding also, our goal is to not have you ping-ponging between the two, but hopefully work with us to get this into a form where we can make a recommendation to zoning that would be, um, constructive. But let's keep going around this.
Well, I agree with what everyone said. It's, you know, progress grade, but as the code is written right now, there's just so many, um, so many variances. It's hard, like, it's hard to say that we, that that's okay, the way that it's written, right, to, to accept if it's one or two things here and there, but it's so many things. That's, but we've all sort of voiced the same concerns.
And, and I think the further burden the applicant has is they're the first.
Yeah.
Right? And so I think from a, my, my perspective is to set a precedent for every other redevelopment that we know is already existing non-conforming, um, is worrisome. There is that burden. And so, you know, I think it takes time, a lot of consideration on what will go into this decision, because it will impact what we foresee, what could be further developments on the street as well.
Yeah, so Albert, we haven't given you a chance.
Can I ask a question of the app, or the people that live? Is there a lot of homes on Parkway Road that are multifamily?
Yes, it's more than, I would say, seventy-five percent multifamily, and most people, I would say their backyard is four feet to the railroad.
And, and is, is it, in your opinion, you have to have two rentable units to make it viable versus having one? 'Cause that's what we're gonna probably come up with, to be honest with you.
I, I think-
You can get a sense.
Yeah.
So I just try to be, I'm trying to be helpful.
I think the likelihood, I'm not referring to my husband and I as, maybe we're rare in the sense that we're motivated to undertake a two-year endeavor, spend our time and a tremendous amount of money, research, talking to archaeologists about dinosaur bones and FEMA flood. And it's been a great education, and I'm, I'm remain so optimistic about the potential of this street and this community. And we do have the biggest, there is no more developable land on Parkway. Some of my neighbors, when they park their car, they can't even open their car door. You have to, like, keep your weight down to, to laterally walk out like this.
That's like my garage. I'm, I'm sympathetic.
Sounds like Bronxville, yeah.
Yeah.
So, it, so, if you to live in one and build one to rent, that's not viable for you?
It, it's not, because we wanna spread the cost over at least two rental units to absorb the blow of increased construction costs, all the subs that will be brought into the picture, delays that would be inevitable, the housing we'd have to put ourselves into for that time period. And these add up to big numbers, you know.
Sure.
If we're gonna do that, we're better off just buying, you know, something else, so.
Okay, thanks for that. And so, I, just outside of that, I, yeah, there's a lot of variances for me to say yes, unfortunately.
Mm-hmm.
Although I think there's something, maybe Mike had something, that maybe this road should be reexamined in some way, because if we were to say, just before we say yes to this, we'd have a lot of applicants next month, which is fine.
Not from Parkway Road. There's not a, there's not other lots.
Theoretically, you could redevelop other properties.
Yeah, I guess they wouldn't, they wouldn't have to come to us, because they wouldn't be in VAR, right? Right.
I'm not sure I'm understanding.
No, you're right, that I would, they wouldn't have to come here.
They might just come to zoning, you're saying, rather than-
No, no, what I'm saying is, I don't think there's, I think this is somewhat of a unique situation on Parkway Road. There's only two or three-
Lots that can handle this.
Lots that could be, um, expanded, just physically, let alone with the zoning rules.
Mm-hmm. You know, I, circling back, I think that, you know, the concept of redevelopment is something I think we're universally, um, big fans of. I think Albert was touching on one approach, which is, you know, uh, two units instead of three. There are lots of approaches, and in the end, those approaches are up to you, not us, in terms of how to get this through. There's perhaps three units that are not quite of the same scale, or perhaps the two rental units are not quite of the same scale that you currently have. But it's at least my instinct that, you know, um, we've learned a lot tonight. I think we wanna help you get to a good, um, solution here. And at least on my part, and we can decide whether we want to turn this into a motion or not, we would think, at least I would think, in terms of tabling this for today, so you have an opportunity to work with Paul and Sarah constructively, to see if you can come up with something, 'cause I think all of us see the potential benefit of, you know, the trustees looking at Parkway Road and what they think is appropriate, but there's also, the concern is to, you know, whether you're going to live long enough, you know, to get through that. And if we can be constructive in the meantime, I think we want to be, um, open to that. Um, and so, you know, that's at least what I was thinking about, depending on what others think.
Yeah, and I would, we have a lot of important people here. Is there, is there, is there a precedent, like, could we look at Parkway Road and sort of say, as a town, and say, we should change this, or that's not, as a non-
I think, Jim, correct me, that's not part of our-
No, I'm gonna talk about the planning board, but some other-
You certainly could provide a, a recommendation of some kind to the village board, request that they look at it, suggest that they look at it. You certainly could do that as a board.
Because, you know, this, this idea of the water mitigation, I mean, I mean, I lived next to the football field. I had five feet in, oh, my daughter was oh-seven. It's awful. It's, it's a disaster. And then they put the pumps in, so I got saved, later, years later. But every time there's a, every time there's a lot of water, you go to the train on this road, and you guys all know, there's stuff on the street. So, you know, it's only a matter of time before you get a compromised basement. That's a real problem. So these kind of systems are really interesting in that area. Uh, but it's probably financially not feasible for most people or the town to help out.
One thing to add that is interesting, FEMA, and then there's many grants that are going around in areas like Long Island and the city where people can lift their homes to hire, yeah, they might be-
They could, they can go to FEMA, and, 'cause it's a FEMA flood zone, right?
It's a FEMA flood zone, but, you know-
Maybe there's something they could do.
That, that's something in addition that I'm exploring with some of the, at the state level and at the county level, what incentives are available. Just a lot of neighbors I've been talking to who have been through this process now with greater frequency, and they're tired, and they're fed up. And it's hard to pass on that pro- problem and good conscience to the next buyer.
Water in the basement is, uh, is, you don't forget it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and, and this would be, I think, the start at building for the climate that we know is here to stay, so.
I guess one of the things I, uh, that strikes me is, in it, in some ways, we're talking about this i- if, as if we need to redefine the rules for Parkway Road and ask the village trustees to consider that, et cetera. But, um, we really are dealing with a one or two-off situation here. And having the board reexamine the rules for the whole road when there's only a few houses that are affected by this, just because of their physical constraints, um, maybe we're ducking the issue if we do that.
Yeah, that, that's why I'm proposing, you know, as a concept, that we table it this month. Give the applicant-
Instead of saying no, yeah.
A, a chance, not, not come to a final conclusion. Give the applicant a chance to work constructively and see if we can come up with something that can, that can work for everyone. And we would not be rezoning Parkway. All we would be doing is-
Right, dealing with a particular situation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm trying to balance, 'cause we kind of finished the public meeting and we're having our debate up here, if that's, uh, if that's okay. So we're kind of letting the owner jump in, but if that's, if that's okay, yeah.
Yes.
Please, yep.
Many of the variances, whether we have the size or smaller size, are still gonna be in play, because it's a non-conforming lot with non-conforming depths and so forth. So the number of areas shouldn't cloud the issue of-
If, if, if all you were doing was building on the footprint of the prior foundation, I don't think you'd be, even if that's non-conforming, I don't think you'd be having the issues that you're having here. It's the additional structure on the, on the empty lot. We recognize working within a footprint is different than expanding the footprints. I think we're trying to separate those. Yeah.
The, um, uh, is, do the zoning rules prohibit how many stories a house can be on Parkway Road?
Yes.
And that's limited to two and a half, essentially? So it, it, currently, the house has got three stories.
Two and a half, yeah.
Two and a half.
Well, there's a third floor.
Uh, it doesn't ca- it doesn't count because of the height of the ceiling.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
But it's, it can be legally occupied and have a bedroom and a kitchen and a bathroom?
Yes, I mean, we, we can narrow it down and raise it up to get additional bulk.
No, I, I mean, the existing house.
The, the, no, the current house, the third floor is not compliant by today's, um, building code standards, because the ceilings are too low and the egress and the size of the windows is not compliant. So my understanding is when, I think in sixty-six, as Paul mentioned, when it changed from three-family, and then you lose the ability, right, when something's dormant for a year, the, the certificate of occupancy.
I see, okay.
So it can't recognize, be recognized currently as a three-family. It was a three-family.
So it's technically a two-family today, just because of that expiration? Okay. Yeah.
So, so the third, I, I'm trying to, I, I missed the last part. So the third floor, you couldn't have a third floor that would be high enough and have the windows to have a livable situation?
In it, in its current form?
No, if you were to put a third floor on, on a two, if you had two units with three floors. Could you put a third floor on?
As a rebuild, yes.
Just to, I'm just-
I don't think structurally, the current house could sustain a third floor.
No, if you to do, if you to do a new place with two units instead of three. Just, just-
Yes.
Hear me out. It's, I'm just-
You could do a third floor, yes.
If you build more of a classic townhouse.
And it would be a livable floor.
Right, but we, additional variances for the-
It would be even more non-conforming.
I think that was your question, James.
My question is whether, under the applicable zoning rules, you could put up, uh, a new structure with three stories. And I think the answer is no.
Same question, same question. Paul?
So, uh, in Residents B, uh, we have a thirty-five feet high, and that would be the mean roof height, meaning if you went from the top plate of the second floor to the ridge, it would be ha- halfway between there.
Okay.
Uh, so that's thirty-five feet and two and a half stories, so.
Okay.
Potentially, you could have something. It wouldn't be like the whole area. Uh, you'd have sloped roof. Uh, so, you know, you have to try and get as much, uh, you know, like, the minimum required, uh, square footage with building code for habitable space. You know, really, you're struggling with habitable space at that point, whether you comply with those, those rules.
Okay.
So you probably could do some, but not a whole lot.
But you couldn't essentially put, uh-
And then, and then if you do that, then it's, uh, you sprinkle the whole house down, so.
Oh, okay.
That would add in this one.
And do you need to have-
It has natural sprinkling. Sorry.
You've got good water supply.
Understood. That's what we're trying to help with. Yeah.
Um, to the architect, um, can you talk a little bit about how you went about sizing this and deciding, you know, how far to push some of these variances? And, and because I'm going through my mind, what's the lesser of evils on, you know, what are the variances that need to be existing, or what can be curtailed back to potentially approve this?
So, it, when you look at the zoning information, you know, you could see that there are a number of constraints that the current house is already non-conforming. Current lot is non-conforming. I'm not saying to just make the house random sizes. We're looking, you know, at a program to get three, three-bedroom units that are attractive, market rate, and sort of comparably sized to what's out there, which tend to be between fourteen hundred to eighteen hundred square feet. So that's kind of the program. And then, you know, we start looking at, you know, other things, you know, what parts, you know, i- is the two-car garage valuable? You know, 'cause that is a number of variances too, right? Then you look at the, the wood deck in the back. Is that necessary? You know, e- each of these things, you know, we've tried to make the minimum impact, but still feasible. And, you know, a two-hundred-square-foot deck on a, you know, sixteen-hundred-square-foot unit is proportional, you know? And the fact that a, a deck lets the water flow through versus a patio. So we consider that more environmentally sensitive and also more saleable, because people tend to use decks more than even, like, patios, which have a more impervious surface. So when you look, I mean, I'm happy to look at the floor plans with you, but these are not big bedrooms. These are like eleven-by-eleven-foot bedrooms. These are not grand, but they're- These are not grand, but they're, you know, they're market rate. It has a nice open floor plan, which seems to be very, you know, coveted at the, at this moment. So the, the ground floor, you know, has, it's all open area. So the, you know, the idea would be like, the framing of this would just be all those TJI joists just going across and basically no rooms. And even, you know, after COVID, when people were in their little spaces, now they still want open concept. This is, you know, what, what we're trying to balance is, is something that's both works for the owner, works for the market, works for the Bronxville, you know, municipality. But, you know, when you start to break it down, and then you also have to have the mechanicals up, and then naturally, that's the least, you know, sensible place, you know, in terms of service and so forth. But, you know, getting inundated again makes no sense. So then we have, you know, mechanical and storage up in the attic. You know, clearly not ideal, but, you know, it's cleaner of the dirty shirts.
Yeah. Right. So I think what we're all trying to balance is the desire of the homeowner. And we understand why this plan makes sense to the homeowner and the, you know, zoning that we have from the village and trying to reconcile that. And that's, you know, why I continue to believe more time could be the friend of everyone, you know? Other thoughts?
I agree.
Would someone like to make?
Can I just add?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
What does more time do? Like, what?
The concept is, I think we've tried to provide constructive feedback to the homeowner. If the homeowner wants a direct answer tonight, I think we can get one. I don't think that would necessarily be in her interest, but that's ultimately her call. I think it could be more constructive for us to put this over to the next meeting and the homeowner would use that time together with her professionals to work with Paul, to see if there's something else that could represent a modification, that could make this a win-win for everyone. But in the end, procedure's up to, up to you, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still a little troubled by the fact that we're forcing this lot on Parkway Road to look vast, substantially different than eighty percent of the housing there. And if we do force something closer to compliance, we're going to end up with a two-unit place or nothing. And I think the value of having a spiffed-up residence, having the mitigation of floodwaters, and an investment in Parkway Road for the first time in decades. I think, other than at the Avalon, I think, I'm not as negative about forcing, about the plans and forcing it smaller. And I do have one question, too. Would it be premature to have design review look at this?
Design review felt it was premature before this meeting. They felt we should see it first, and they would be part of the review process for the next meeting. They, they felt that this was frankly so far out of compliance that it was premature for them to look at it. They were pretty clear with us.
Could, could you have a very nice, large, two-unit that doesn't, is big as the three? And you could get a decent amount of money for a big unit? I don't know. I don't know what the prices are.
I think that another owner of the property that we could find, if we sell our home to someone else and kind of could maybe undertake. But if I shared that I invested two years, we made five design iterations. We did one that was renovating the existing, one that was four-unit with garages on the ground floor, one that was three-unit with garages on the ground floor and no detached garages. And we learned that we couldn't have three curb cuts, and we had to hire a civil engineer to do a speed study, a speed study that was just done for, the speed study that was done for the village speed reduction. And now this is our fifth iteration. We hire, we're trying to do all the right things to hire the right team to get to the outcome. But the impetus, and I think, James, I share with you, is this is the forgotten road. And when you think about, on your team, the weakest link drives the average down for everybody. And what I'm seeing happen with my neighbors, Eight Parkway, that home just traded at a steep discount because of the flood history. The guy just bought it, it just flooded again. He just renovated it. What's going to happen with these homes? If we don't provide homeowners on our streets, my neighbor Nicole bought her home a year ago, and her basement flooded after she finished it. This is going to be a race to the bottom unless we provide incentives to. What would move me about watching the meeting with One Some Place was it was innovative in energy. It was innovative in construction and utilizing the FAR and the zoning codes based on what we know today. And this is the same thing, just for a residential concept.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it's going to be hard to find the right owner of a property who's as motivated and willing. Thank God I'm still married. After this, I hope to still be married. But, you know, this is a labor of love, to believe in this and take it to the, to the end. And I'm in this game. I, we will see this through and we'll do it the right way. And a design review committee, if you tell me to paint the home pink, we'll paint it pink. Whatever, whatever's needed. I believe in this concept, and I, I think it makes a lot of sense.
If, if the choices, and maybe the choices aren't, we'll see. But if the choices are to have us take action on this tonight or put it over for a month to work it out, do you have a preference?
Well, if we, if we decide tonight, how does this work? Majority wins? Or what?
Yes.
That's how it works?
Unfortunately.
I already feel like I already know how everyone's voting. My concern with adding more time and iterating is, you know, I don't want to be here a year and meet Paul in the basement of my house again when it floods and beyond Design Concept Six, when we could have corrected this and changed the trajectory in the course of the Forgotten Street.
Well, this is your first meeting with us.
It is, it is. I don't know. I'm kind of scared to see if you vote now because I don't know what's going to.
It doesn't have to be up to you. I just wanted to give you the courtesy.
But then what if you say no? Is it game over? That's just, I go, I go home and it's, I live in that house?
Jim, do you want to comment? Since, since we have our attorney here, maybe we could all benefit.
If you force a vote and the vote is no, then that's it. You can't come back with the exact same application, you know? I think you're being offered the opportunity to think about it for a month, to think about whether you want to go to the village board, to think about whether you want to consider doing anything different, to even just come in and show a comparison of, of something that would be more complying to this. Where the board may say, you know what, we don't think that there's such a difference that we should. I think that's the kind of exercise you would usually see after a discussion.
I think we want to be helpful.
If, if we asked this to go to the village board, what does that look like? If we asked, if we said.
Jim, if, if, if we kind of throw up our hands and say, trustees, you take a look at this, how does that, how does that work?
If you say, look at this street, it's separate, as a separate entity to other streets and.
Right, so you could do that. You could simply adjourn this matter and ask the trustees to take a look to see whether they have any appetite to address it and to change it and put a pin in it, and if they don't, then come back and try to work it. That's one of the options. Those things can be done simultaneously. Otherwise, the applicant can, this could be adjourned. The applicant could take, accept your advisement. Could also be, you could also give them communication to the village board that you'd like to know whether they have any interest in addressing this zoning in a short term.
Yeah, but in terms of parallel processing, my instinct is that trustees have planning boards and zoning boards. They don't get caught up in the minutia of the day-to-day things that we should deal with. And so my instinct is to maybe do that in parallel with our taking whatever action we take here, rather than make the applicant wait for whatever that time period might be.
Right, I think it's a longer process. They can't look at, if they're going to look at rezoning, they can't look at just this lot.
Right.
They have to look at an area.
That whole zone.
And that involves study and so forth and so on. So, yeah, that's why I.
Thank you.
Sort of said what I've said, I think.
I mean, as a, as a.
And you, you have, you have the option to just adjourn this meeting if you want, you know, on your own.
Yeah.
Decision.
Yeah.
As, as a planning board in general, when we see these kinds of variances, we say no.
In very different areas. And we do it based on the consistency of the character of the neighborhood.
Yep.
And this one, that pushes me in the opposite direction from denial. It pushes me in favor of permitting an investment in a street that hasn't had investment, improving the infrastructure of a floodzone house. And, you know, the area's got some real promise. That Malpe Park is nearby. And if we provide, you know, housing for three families near that park coming into the school, I think it's, I think it's consistent with the character of the neighborhood. I think it's improvement to what's there, clearly. And it doesn't, I don't think, risk setting a negative precedent because it'll still be one of the smaller relative footprints on Parkway Road. And I'm, I'm more and more convinced this is a, a good trade-off.
To that point, maybe we can look at this analysis around each of the major variances, right? And one of the first is the building coverage.
Mm-hmm.
And this analysis that they've provided says the average for the homes, well, I think eighty, it looks like eighty percent are non-conforming. Yeah, I'm looking at this sheet on the yellow side, which is the building non-confor, oh, sorry.
Paul, do you have this that they gave us? Let's make sure Paul has this because he's the only one who really will understand it. Okay.
So it says that it looks like eighty to ninety percent of the homes are existing non-conforming on building coverage. The average is thirty-three percent. And Twenty Parkway will go from an existing twenty-four percent versus the required twenty-five to thirty-eight point five.
Mm-hmm.
So this will be slightly above the average.
Of the non-conforming, understood.
Of all the non-conforming. And, but to Jim's point, I think we're trying to look at it. Is it look, going to look very different from the neighborhood?
Yeah.
We're five percent above. Let's.
Yeah.
Take that into consideration. And then when I look at the FAR analysis, again, about ninety percent are non-conforming. The average here is sixty-five percent. And on the applicants, they currently are at thirty percent. The required is thirty-seven percent, and they're going to forty-nine percent, which will be well below.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
The, the peers in the neighborhood, okay? So those are two. The other variances are the minimum, the rear setback, which they're not changing. That's going to be an existing non-conforming.
Yep.
But where there is a, a change will be the front setback from currently nineteen feet to thirteen feet. So you're coming six feet closer, right?
Okay, just open portico. It's not, it's not closed. It's just sheltered by the roof.
So you're saying the, the solid building is in the same place? It's pushing the portico forward?
Using the same foundation.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the building's in the same place. We've just added steps for portico. That's that six feet.
And you need steps. They've raised.
Because they've raised.
The entire property.
Yeah. Okay, so, and then what are the other variances we needed? The generator? What's the generator, what's the generator, can you, what's the generator variance, please?
It's, it's also in the, in the, it's, it's too close to the lot line.
Too close to the railroad tracks, essentially.
And that is, yes. And it's also has to be elevated because it's in the floodplain.
Gotcha.
Right. And, and if there.
You can fix, you can fix that, is what you're saying?
We, we could, we could.
Yes.
But.
But.
Was that generator going to work for all three houses?
It was a part of.
The generator, that would, that would service if you lost power. That would service all three houses?
Yes, yes. And, and I think it's prudent, given.
Oh, I agree. That's what I'm asking.
We all get where it is, yeah.
And Paul, can, can we look at the, there's a site section through the, I think on maybe the next page? Yeah. So, you know, talking about a rear yard variance next to an elevated railroad track is, is, it's kind of academic, really.
Right, but Paul, if you could just move that down a little bit so that we can see the top. This gets to, I think, the point, Jim, you were raising. It's, it's somewhat comparable to others on the street, but it definitely has more bulk. You know, when you, that's the cross-section.
Yeah.
Correct me of that side of the street, and you can see the difference.
Yeah.
Between this new structure and the adjacent structures. That's the one that really caught my eye.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But again, you know, this is also, it's, it's a hodgepodge of conforming, non-conforming. And, you know, the, the cross-section, I think, here also tells a story of what, you know, how diverse this area is, where you have, you know, six-story Midland Garden brick buildings. You have the parking, Metro North. Then this is basically nine feet lower than the tracks. Then it descends down, and then you have.
We know where the river is, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I know you do. But, you know, I, I appreciate Michael's kind of understanding of what we're trying to say, is that the context is really what we're trying to work with. We're not trying to flout the zoning regulations. We're, we're trying to do something that's.
Mm-hmm.
The right thing.
Okay.
So we went through the generator, and then last is the deck, which existing is twenty-one feet, and then proposed will be eight and a half. But I think we believe the deck adds value versus the alternative, which would be.
Patio?
A patio, which is non-pervasive, introduces more flooding issues.
Below the patio typically is just gravel.
Yeah.
So that helps absorb as well.
And then, and then the rest are the side setbacks and rear setbacks?
Right. And of, and of course, the garage itself being rebuilt warrants also some kind of variance. But, you know, also in terms of impervious, impervious, the driveway that we're proposing on the north side would be the, the pavers that are drainable.
Yeah.
And if it helps our cause, we can certainly, you know, rebuild this in drainable pavers as well. And also potentially remove the garage and make that, you know, vegetated.
I think that's what we're trying to get at, is there are some thoughts we could have here. But I think having them work with, with our pro, you know, in this context, could be constructive. Yeah. And also, design review. One other procedural thing I wanted to make sure I was clear with the board members and also with the applicant on, in fairness, is we could have a sequence here where we work with you, and we work with design review, and we come back next month, and we love this. And we say yes, and you still have to go to zoning. And it can be that planning says, you've made these changes, we love it, we think it's an improvement. We're sending it to zoning with a recommendation to approve it. Zoning is free. Jim, correct me on this, to take their own position. And I just wanted, in fairness, to get that on the team.
Your set is correct. And actually, the, the normal procedure in a situation like this is if you got to loving it, you would say, we love it. And then you would not vote, but rather send it to zoning.
With a recommendation.
With a recommendation. Let them grant the variances so that you've got something, so that your site plan is now legalized, as it were, and it would come back to you for final action.
Got it.
That would be the normal.
Thank you, yeah. I think you already knew it, but in fairness, we wanted to.
If, if you were to remove the garage, what would that impact on any of the variance calculations?
I think, I believe it would reduce the building coverage. Because driveway, you know, if that is, if it's driveway, let's say, that's not towards building coverage, I believe. I believe.
So that would help?
Yeah.
There are lots of us here who don't have garages, so, yeah.
Right. To the, to the applicant, did you feel the garage was, is a necessary component of the house, or?
I think we did the garage, because it's required from Bronxville to put a garage.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
It's required for what?
I, I thought it was a requirement for Bronxville.
I would think the number of parking spaces, but Paul, you're the expert, rather than them being enclosed. Maybe the six spaces, but not the coverage. We'll see what Paul has to say.
You have to have a, all right. Maybe need space for the garage.
Yeah.
I mean, a garage ground level?
It's either just parking or...
Oh, parking or garage. No, we didn't need the garage. The original hope was to have the garage in the foundation, on the ground floor. So you had, everything was pervious. You had a really big lawn, and you're taking away all of the driveways, essentially. You just have giant gardens and lawns. But then there was a height variance, and then there was a curb cut variance.
Mm-hmm.
So it was hard to pick which way to design to be the... But no, we could get rid of the garage if that was a means, so, but we wouldn't miss
My only other thought would be, if we are sending the applicant to do some revisment, if we need to provide guidelines on what we're looking for, so that this, that additional month is not done in vain and can be productive towards what this board would approve of. Do we need to provide that guidance, or we let them work?
Usually, and Jim can correct me on this, but usually what we do is indicate what wasn't, doesn't work in more general terms, and let our pros do the work. I think we've got sophisticated folks, both in the owner and in her advisors, that I think understand what we're saying. I think we don't want to box ourselves in particularly in terms of how we ultimately do this, but I think we want to be constructive, and I'm sure Paul, who's always constructive, will, you know, try to work with you in a way that would make it work. And I think, you know, you've learned something tonight, but I think we have too.
I mean, it, it does require a lot of variances, but it's not a hulking McMansion like I think I fear in Bronxville, especially given the neighborhood it's in. So I'm, we'd get the building coverage down a decent amount with the garage gone, and then it puts it sort of below average for those two measures, the floor area ratio and the building coverage.
Yeah, I think what Design Review was hoping to see, you know, was a conforming plan, just for argument's sake, to show what something would look like if you tried to hit every zoning variance. We understand that's not what you're going to do. It's just a reference point. And then a plan that, you know, would somehow take a little bit more into account what the zoning is trying to achieve there. And if you manage to work on that a little bit with Paul, get it in front of Design Review, and now it comes to us with Design Review approval, you know, that would all feel constructive.
Just to, the homework is to design another, another, another design that's conforming?
Our hope would be two designs, and Paul, correct me on this. One would be a theoretical conforming design, big picture, not forty pages of design.
The owner just paid for his time, design, but we...
It's ultimately up to you what you choose to pay for. What we're saying would be helpful as a reference point is how constrained you would be if you stuck to the zoning code and you illustrate that to educate us. That would be helpful.
Not full-blown plans, by any means.
No, no, no. It's like a one pager.
It's a box.
It's a box. Yeah. We don't know what he'll charge you for that, but a box.
What are you going to charge me?
How much are you going to charge, how much are you going to charge for a box?
That's not our perjury.
Be nice to her.
And then what comes out of the discussions with Paul that, you know, gets us where I think you can tell we'd all like to be. Yeah.
So would the idea be, if we wanted a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, which is what this concept is, for three units, if you were to design a three-bed, two-and-a-half-bath with today's zoning codes, what that would look like? Would the rooms be six foot by seven foot?
We're not saying how many bedrooms are going to be in anything.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. We're not...
Okay.
The last people you want designing this are the people up on the case.
But I think it's a good reality check, because if, if we see how tight a conforming structure would be, I think that might be instructive. And query whether what we're preserving is just some sort of adherence to a zoning code that doesn't seem to recognize what Parkway Road is.
You're, you're, so you would live in the middle one?
I'm going to look through the best-looking one.
Sounds like an owner.
You'd be comfortable in, what is it, seventeen, sixteen hundred feet?
Maybe not the middle, it's sure two walls, but I would, I would actually pick the best-looking one. Yeah, I would actually seventeen hundred square feet today. The first floor is seventeen hundred fifty square feet.
I would just think you would want a twenty-two hundred...
In the end, it's her house.
It's your house.
Yeah. So it sounds like, Jim, rather than tabling the proposal, usually the way folks would deal with this is to simply adjourn the, the meeting?
I think, I think it's the right thing to do. We're, we've come a long way, and we understand a lot more than we did when we started the meeting.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
And I think for myself, I'm more in the, in favor. Not now, but I'm getting there. I think it would be nice to see the box. Please be nice with the price. Just so we know that it's not doable. That's what it's going to show us, right?
Yeah.
Show us the not-doable box.
Yeah.
And maybe the garage, I mean, you have to move the generator, right? That has to be done. That should be, that should be easy, right? And is the garage, does she need a garage? Did I, did I pay attention to that part?
She said no.
Sounds like that's low-hanging.
You don't need a garage, unless you want one. And we'll be more, you know, and we'll, we'll have time to think about it as well.
Yeah.
And drive by, buy more.
Yeah.
And what?
It is drive-by more. It is, it is a big lot.
You, I think, had a question, Mike, about inspection.
Right.
Do you want to raise that?
What, I guess, based on our precedent that we had on White Plains of a demo and a replacement, I think it was helpful to, at that time, for that project, to review the dilapidated, dilapidated state that home was in, and understand that it was not going to be possible for that owner to renovate the ho, house in its existing format. And I think that's partially the argument this applicant is putting forth, that to replace the exact same footprint is not achievable, and so that could...
Not worth it, too.
Huh? And not worth it. And, and so seeing that may also help us understand with a visit to say, it's not possible, the, the box is not possible in any way, shape, or form, and this proposal is the best of very difficult decision. And, and I would just reemphasize, I think, after going through with the analysis we had on the building coverage and FAR, that what's unique about this situation is that though it will be, it is requiring a number of variances, it is actually putting it in line with the rest of the neighborhood to a certain extent.
Yeah.
Which is a positive for the proposal.
And it provides a little more housing, too. I like the idea of three units and forcing it down to two. I don't know, seems to, I hear so much talk about increasing the housing stock in the metropolitan area, and this is more palatable than some of the proposals that might be forced on us, so it's a plus.
So that's a request you can consider, you know, in terms of, you don't have to respond now, in terms of a future potential tour. Could be us, could be Design Review, could be both. That, that'll be a follow-up, Paul, and Christine will follow up with you on that.
The, the tour is more to tell me if you think the existing structure is worth renovating as is, or do you want to...
It's to educate us on the current conditions. We, we see the outside. It's a quick walkthrough.
Right.
Yeah. It's up to you. You don't have to decide now. Yeah. Yeah. But it did help us, in this other case, get to yes. Yeah.
The top floor isn't, it doesn't...
We're not going anywhere where we're going to fall through the floor. You would be in control.
You might.
Understood. No, we, we get it.
You might.
Yeah.
I'm...
Yeah. We'll bring our parachute.
She may want us to sign a waiver before we go.
So do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Our next meeting, Christina, when will our next meeting be? November eighth, so we'll look forward to seeing you then. Thank you.